Thank you, thank you very much. We're a couple of minutes late here, but we'll get started right now. North Las Vegas City Council welcomes you, our City Council meeting this evening. There are two public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards, which are located on the table outside the main entrance where you entered, or to my left of the podium rail over here, we ask that you put your name, address, everything on there so we can put it in the record. And when I call upon you, give it to the city clerk, she says right here, would you raise your hand, Marie, right there? And when I call upon you, request that you limit your comments to more than three minutes and we avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with the Nevada Open Meeting Law?
Yes, Mayor, we are in compliance, and I just want to acknowledge that Mayor Protem Churchill is on the line.
Thank you very much. Richard, are you there?
I'm here, Mayor, thank you.
Oh, my gosh, we'd love having you here. Get well. I know you're out of town.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have the opportunity to have the invocation given by Councilman Black. Follow that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Goins Brown. Please rise.
Dear Father in Heaven, we're grateful unto Thee for this beautiful day in North Las Vegas. We're grateful for the many blessings that we receive as members of this community and citizens of this nation, grateful for those that live within North Las Vegas and ask that they can be watched over and provided for. Pray for guidance today as we strive to lead by example and by work and by service to provide for the needs of our community. Pray for those that are ill, that those that are affected by the pandemic, that they can be strengthened and uplifted. We, as community leaders, ask for guidance and direction, and this time I pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Council. We're going to move on to council items. Councilman Barone?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. To begin with, the date that we've been waiting for is almost at hand. Heart Keep Park is going to be having its ribbon cutting opening, sorry, ribbon cutting and opening on Monday, August 2nd, at 8:30 in the morning. If anyone asks why we're doing it in the morning, it's because it's kind of hot. So, the idea is to get in and have a little celebration and get out of there. And we might have a very special guest, a Las Vegas resident and noted professional, Mr. Ricardo Laguna, to be present for that. Of course, this event is actually happening on Craig Ranch, which is, of course, you know, our colleague's ward. But for the back-to-school event at Craig Ranch, Regional Park, that's going to be this Saturday, July 24th, from 9:00 to 1:00, there are bus passes available by calling the, they're free bus passes to make it to the area, and they're available by calling our council office at 633-1012, 702-633-1012. I'm very happy that, of course, you know, in September, besides the other events that we have going on here in our city, we're going to continue with a new precedent that we started last year, and we're going to have a cultural event, like we did last year, Ecto de Independencia, the Mexican Independence Day Celebration, on Wednesday, September 15th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., right outside in Liberty Park. So, that should be a very interesting council night. I wanted to also give a shout out to the operating engineers, Local Number 12, who unfortunately I could not make their grand opening of their educational and training center. I guess it's called the Richard D. Daleman Education and Training Center. And so, I just wanted to give a shout out to them. And finally, of course, we hosted a press conference to advocate for electronic vehicles, specifically the need for more electronic buses, I mean, electric buses here in the valley, to, of course, you know, protect our environment and, of course, protect our citizens. Mayor, actually, I think that's enough. Thank you very much.
Very good. Councilman Black?
Thank you, Mayor Lee. I'm super excited to be able to bring back the back-to-school event that I partner with each year with Commissioner Marilyn Kirkpatrick. It will be held on August 7th at 4:00 p.m. at the Silver Mesa Rec Center. We will have some awesome bike shop-quality BMX bikes to raffle off, 500 backpacks with school supplies, some tasty food, swimming, games, and music. And we'll be also partnering with the Move Your Way program at the Southern Nevada Health District, encourages physical activity and physical health of all kinds. So, please put that on your calendar, August 7th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Silver Mesa Rec Center. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Goins Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I know you've been hearing in the news and other social media aspects that SNUMA, the Southern Nevada Urban Micro Academy, is back in full force for its second year, and super excited that we have added kindergarten and also the curriculum that is focused on science, technology, arts, engineering, and mathematics, or STEAM Academy. And we are also operating SNUMA in conjunction with the Pioneer Technology and Arts Academy. So, we're so looking forward to starting a new school year with our kindergarten babies. Last week, I was honored to attend, it's called the Blessing Project, and it was in recognition of the Culinary Arts Month, where there were 30 chefs, servers, and those in hospitality and casino industries were honored and thanked for their service to the greater community. And this whole effort started with a six-year-old named Justin Buma. He's the founder of Heroes and Hearts, and he's also an award-winning author, and he made all the gift bags himself and put all of his favorite treats in the gift bag to give to all the culinary workers, and just wanted to thank them because he says they're often overlooked, especially during the pandemic. So, congratulations to Justin. And this month, glad to learn something new, is actually National Minority Health Awareness Month, and it's issues that relate to mental health, impact racial and ethnic minorities because of cultural stigma and the lack of access to mental health care services. And one staggering statistic is suicide was the second-leading cause of death nationwide for both African-Americans and Latinos between the ages of 15 and 24. It's pretty staggering. And so, just keep in mind that there is help out there, and there's nothing wrong for asking for help if you need it. In fact, I would encourage anyone who might be experiencing a mental health issue to reach out to someone. And resources are available in both English and Spanish at minorityhealth.hhs.gov/minoritymentalhealth, or you can always find the information on the city's website.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to the public forum. Now, this is time set aside for comment on posted agenda items. This public forum excludes discussion and public hearing items, which will be heard later and separately. So, if you want to speak on any item listed under the consent agenda, business, or ordinance final action, now is that time. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards or posted agenda items?
No, we don't.
Thank you. And I see no one coming forth, so we will close the first public forum and move on to the agenda.
Item one, approve regular city council meeting agenda for July 20th, 2021. Mayor and councils, our recommendation to approve the agenda is published.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on this? If not, the chair will take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the city council agenda.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
Aye from Mayor Protem Churchill.
Thank you, Richard. Items approved. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Mayor and council, the consent agenda consists of items 2 through 13. It's our recommendation to approve as published.
Thank you. Counsel, any other comments or questions on the consent agenda? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Move to approved consent.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
Aye from Mayor Protem Churchill.
Items approved. Moving on to public hearings.
Mayor and council, item 14, approve AMP 07, 2021, North Haven Master Plan applicant Robert E. Le Dig Jr., Sergeant Management LLC, to request an amendment to the comprehensive master plan to change the land use designation from mixed-use neighborhood to mixed-use commercial located in northeast corner of Cary Avenue and West Street.
Thank you. Do we have any kind of presentation on this? Ed, thank you for being here.
Good afternoon. I have to say afternoon because it's not evening quite yet, Mr. Mayor, council folks, and staff. I believe you have received all the documentation.
Ed Vance, for the record.
Oh, sorry.
No, I know. Did you fill out a blue card?
No.
Oh, you're going to get docked at least one boat now. That's sad, Ed. You don't screw it up from here.
1160, Town Center Drive, Suite 170. It's, as you've seen the documentation, we're not really presenting buildings at this time, although we included a couple. This is simply a PUD request. We're changing the zoning of what is, what, 50, how many parcels did we have? 57 to 1. And we're changing the zoning from R4 to PUD, which allows us to do what we're about to do, which is to create a medical campus village, which includes some housing, mostly affordable, and other medical uses. And we've got a number of those kinds of uses already signed up with leases and letters of intent, including a clinic. So, we're very excited about that. And so, if you, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. But I wanted to give a shout out to staff, Robert Eastman, Councilman Brown, and, of course, Mr. Damian, for helping us shepherd this thing through the process. And we're just delighted to be here to answer any questions you.
Thank you very much. Was that your presentation? I think you have two items, don't you?
Yes.
So, it would be the presentation for both of them? No? Well, it could be.
More or less.
Yeah, okay.
There's not much to show.
So, what we'll do now is ask the public to respond. Anybody here from the public that'd like to come up speak on this issue? Now, we'll close the public hearing. And, Council, do you have any comments or questions? And I'll go to Ms. Goins Brown.
I pushed my button.
Ms. Goins Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to echo some of the same comments that you made, just to thank you to all of our staff, because, as we said last time we chatted, it's been a long, long time. And so, thanks for hanging in there with us, and, you know, we're glad we're hanging there with you. And this has been in the making for, I'm going to say it again, a long time. And so, I'm just happy that we are just one step closer to making this come to reality, and I look forward to when shovels are in the ground, and I know the deal is sealed. So, thank you so much.
We've got one with your name on it.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Councilman Barone?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And again, a little bit like my colleague there, Councilwoman, I wanted to see how the little button works. But, in all seriousness, no, I want to thank you for having, I realize it's an opportunity for you guys, but thank you for choosing the city of Las Vegas. Again, the area has, well, we have a myriad of needs, and this definitely addresses many of the needs. It's almost like a percentage shift towards, in our favor when it comes to anything medical. And, of course, with housing, that's like 1, 1A, and that's probably 1C with mental health. Are there any plans to have any sort of a mental health component to this?
There is two buildings in the center that we're planning for that kind of thing, but until they come forward, I can't say in the affirmative, but it's one of those continuum of care uses that we're very much encouraging other users to come forward to help take advantage of the opportunity we provide.
As a teacher, I actually, I teach psychology, although I don't practice one on TV, right? As someone who teaches psychology, one of the first things I say, NAMI, the National Association of Mental Health there, right, they identify that, hey, each and every year, one out of every four Americans actually has an incident where they could probably use someone to talk to. So, of course, you know, and one in 10 people in our society has a very serious mental health issue. So, again, we're critically underserved. The whole valley gets critically underserved. So, yes, I think there's a very welcome development. And congratulations to our entire staff, I think, for seeing this thing through and putting it together, and very creative use.
Ms. Goins Brown?
If no other comments, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
Aye from Mayor Protem Churchill.
Items approved.
The voice from above.
Mayor and council, item 15, approve ZN 10, 2021, and pass and adopt ordinance number 3082, ordinance related to zoning reclassifying approximately 17.8 plus-minus acres from an R4 high-density residential district to a PUD planned unit development district. ZN 10, 2021, North Haven Master Plan, consisting of an affordable housing facility, surgery center, independent living facility, and assisted living facility, two skilled nursing facilities, and a pediatric care facility for property located at the northeast corner of Cary Avenue and West Street, and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Thank you. And we, we'll just say the presentation you gave us first was your presentation for now. So, I'm going to open this up to public right now. Is everybody in public hearing who would like to come forth and discuss this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And once again, Ms. Goins Brown?
I can just echo the same from item 14.
Okay, we have a motion. Please cast your vote.
And that's my motion.
Aye from Mayor Protem Churchill.
Items approved.
Thank you very much.
Good project.
Mayor and council, item 16, approve AMP 08, 2021, Regal Living at Losi Road and Azure for applicant Regal Real Source LLC to request an amendment to the comprehensive master plan to change the land use designation from single-family O to single-family medium located at the northwest corner of Losi Road and Azure Avenue.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open this up for a public hearing. Anybody want to come up and address the council on this item? Seeing we have no presentation, chair will open for public hearing. Anybody from the public wants to discuss this? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman, this is Churchill, this is your ward, I think. Can you just give us a yes if you're okay with this?
Yes, I'm familiar with this project, Mayor, and I'll be happy to approve AMP-08-2021.
Thank you very much. We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
Mayor and council, item 17, approve ZN 12, 2021, and pass and adopt ordinance number 3083, an ordinance related to zoning reclassifying approximately 16.7 plus-minus acres from an RE Ranch Estates District to a PUD planned unit development district. ZN 12, 2021, Regal Living at Losi Road and Azure to allow 214 detached multifamily dwelling units for property located at the northwest corner of Losi Road and Azure Avenue, and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Thank you. Do we have a presentation on this, or maybe? Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. I'm sorry I didn't get up quickly enough for the prior motion.
Wait, but let me say something real quick. We're not getting anybody to fill out blue cards, Marie. What's the deal with that? Everybody just walked in up here, and we're not filling out the blue cards. We need to put this in the record, everybody out there. The fact is, if you don't put a blue card anymore, don't come up and speak. Is that fair enough? So, because our city clerk has to put this in the record. And so, would you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, I apologize, Mayor.
From now on, if you haven't filled out a blue card, I'm just going to tell you to sit down until we come back to your issue. But you're not, I'm not mad at you.
It's okay if you are. We'll do better with the blue card next time.
I just want the system to run like it's supposed to for the clerk.
Excellent. My name's David Rose, and I'm here on behalf of Regal Real Source, the applicant. I'm available for questions. I just wanted the council to know that. But thank you for considering our project.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to open this up for a public hearing now. Would anybody like to come up and discuss this issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll go to Councilman Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, I'll be happy to approve ZN-12-2021.
Thank you. We have a motion. Council, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Mayor and council, item 18, approve AMP 09, 2021, mixed-use development at the northwest corner of Craig and Bruce for applicant Sienna Holdings Management Company, LLC, to request an amendment to the comprehensive master plan to change the land use designation from community commercial to employment located at the northwest corner of Craig Road and Bruce Street.
You're welcome. We have a presentation.
Nice to see you. Mitch? Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. My name is Mitch O'Grann. I'm the manager and principal owner of Sienna Holding Management Co., LLC, the applicant before you, 10655 Park Run Drive, Suite 160, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89144. The matter before you this evening is what I would call the last big piece of the Craig Infill, Craig Road Infill corridor, on which I've been working for almost four years now. Most of these properties were previously or still owned by the Mendenhall family. And before I go too much further, I want to thank the Mendenhall family publicly, as well as their counsel, Jim Barker, and may he rest in peace, Bob Mendenhall, who passed away about three years ago this summer. They don't make too many Bob Mendenhalls anymore. Mark and Lori, and the whole family for their patience in allowing me to work through these projects and get the tenants that we've been able to achieve. The journey on Craig Road started about three and a half years ago, as I said, and it started at the, I'm not sure if you can see this on the overhead. Mark, is it possible? Do you have that? At the northeast corner of...
Mitch, we don't have it.
Okay. Oh, go ahead. Let me know once.
There we go.
And I just showed this to you by way of a little bit of background, since this has been an ongoing global project for a number of years. And then, I'll get to the actual matter before you this evening, and I'll try to move it along real quickly here. So, my journey on this started at the northeast corner of Craig and Bruce with Texas Roadhouse, and this four acres, when I bought that property from the Mendenhalls. We completed that a couple of years ago, the Panera Bread. We got held up a little bit during COVID, and during that time, the principal came up with a new, more modern prototype with the drive-through. So, we'll probably be starting construction on that in a couple of months. And just at the east of that, the three-tenant building, which houses Blaze Pizza Cafe, Rio, and Jersey Mike's. So, we had the three pads there, just jumping across the street catty corner. We just finished our initial grading and pad certifications yesterday on approximately seven acres at the southwest corner of Craig and Arcata, which is the southwest corner of Craig and Bruce, actually, where we have 7-Eleven, Autozone, Dutch Brothers, Salad and Go, Born and Raised, Freddy's Burger, and it appears now, these two pads that are remaining will be combined to bring BJ's Brew House and Restaurant. Going west, we have six other lots there that this council has previously approved. We have Fly Pie Pizza, which is a drive-through pizza concept you're aware of, Crack Shack Sit Down Restaurant. We have a 7,700-square-foot inline retail with a mixed use of food and non-food retail, service retail. Then, west of that is Advanced Auto Parts, the Wow Car Wash, and the Surbokay. Across the street, it's not shown, but at the northeast corner of Craig and Bruce, I'm in escrow on the remaining two pads there for similar-type retail and food uses. So, that brings us to the matter that's before you tonight, and that is, for your consideration, the 20.5 acres remaining at the northwest corner of Craig and Bruce. And I'll just put up a, I believe you have this in your materials already. Not sure if that can really be pan out a little bit. There we go. Perfect. So, this was a commercial subdivision, I believe, that was recorded some time ago in the 90s, and we're here to amend that for the following uses. We have six parcels up front. We'll start here on the corner. This is slated to be an Olive Garden restaurant. We are in the final stages of finishing that lease as we speak. Next to that, to the west, is a McDonald's. That lease has been signed. To the west of that is El Pollo Loco. We are in the final throes of that lease. Just to the west of the main drive aisle, coming in off of Craig Road, we have a Starbucks. And even though there's a Starbucks just about, I don't know, less than a half a mile away at Losi, Starbucks found that it would be desirable to put another location close to that one, because I'm sure you're aware that that location backs up quite a bit into the traffic there. To the west of that is another building similar to the one I built at the northeast corner that will house three or four tenants. Right now, we have a concept Hawaiian restaurant, Mobeta's. We have Via 313 Deep Dish Pizza from Detroit, and we'll probably put another dessert-type tenant in there. And finally, to round out the front, we have Chili's coming to us at the corner there at Donner Street. What's interesting about the Chili's and the Olive Garden deals is you'll be pleased, once you see them built. They're the newest prototypes, very modern architecture with the times, if you will. So, that's your front six lineup. In the back, draw your attention to the first building here on the left. That is a 100,000-square-foot mixed-use, let me stand corrected, 100,000-square-foot industrial-type building, 30,000 feet of which will house offices, and the balance will be warehouse. This is a particular build suit for a R&amp;D technology company that will be bringing 200 full-time jobs to this building. They're bringing their corporate headquarters here, and including the possibility of part-time jobs on top of the full-time jobs. We make total 300 jobs just in this venue alone. And finally, remaining is the 77,000-square-foot light industrial warehouse that we're proposing for the site. And I was here two weeks ago, and Mr. Jordan read into the record, the ordinance number 3084. We're in complete agreement with that ordinance and the mandates and qualifications, and we'll be bound to those as well. So, if you have any questions, I may be answered.
The first pad that you just had certified, everything's just moving right along, right?
Yes, that goes back to the eight parcels across the street, directly across the street. So, all those pads, as of yesterday, are final. So, we're getting ready to start utility trenching next week.
That'll be great.
The first building should be finished, well, we're hoping for November, but certainly by the end of the year.
Thank you very much. Ms. Goins Brown?
Thank you. Thank you, Mitch. And I also met with the owners for the BJ's and was pleased with the product that they are bringing over there as well. Neighborhood meeting went very successful. Lots of good questions were asked and answered, and they are just thrilled to see something happening. So, if there's no other questions or comments...
I think, Isaac, did you? Yeah, Councilman Barone had one.
Okay.
And then, we'll come back to you.
Just real quick, thank you very much for coming down, sir. Just real quick, this is a little bit different, I think, for North Las Vegas, right? Is there anywhere else in the valley that has something similar to this?
Is there any?
Yeah, to your knowledge, is there anything in the valley that's similar to this? Because for us, there's something totally, it's actually entirely different. Is there anything that you can compare this development to anywhere else in the valley?
Well, certainly, we have industrial developments all over the valley, as we have commercial developments. I'm familiar with a certain development that comes to mind in the southwest part of town. I think it's in the Rainbow Sunset corridor, where they have a commercial up front with some light industrial in the back. I'm not quite sure if I'm understanding your question, but...
The point is, right, it was a few years ago when, of course, our residents put to us, you know, the challenge to find opportunities to have more sit-down dining, to bring more technically-minded jobs, besides the service industry-type jobs. Councilwoman, this is a fantastic project, and I think it fits the bill of what the residents were asking for, what they were demanding. On this one, I would say to our staff, as well with the developer, and of course, with yourself, to everybody, now, what do we have to say? Mission accomplished?
Thank you.
Yeah. And we haven't voted yet.
Well, to your point, out of the totality of the parcels that I laid out for you, there are 26 total individual parcels on this, what I call the Craig Road project. Of those 26, 22 are restaurants, and of the 22, we've got, what we have, let's see, Roadhouse, Olive Garden, Chili's, Mobeta's.
You had me at Panera.
We probably have, I think, seven to 10 of them are sit-down casual or fast casual type.
Again, you had me at Panera. Again, you know, to my, I don't think we have a Panera anywhere on our side of town. So, again, you know, it's a bit of a milestone. In any other part of the valley, maybe it wouldn't be such a big deal. This is a hallmark. There's a milestone for us, I think. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you, thanks to the council, and thank you to the staff. They've been very gracious in working with me and taking my calls and having meetings on this. It's been a three-year-long journey in placing these tenants where they needed to go, so...
Ms. Goins Brown?
It's just a nice mix. Well, everyone's taste buds can be met somehow. So, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
Mayor Protem Churchill is very happy to approve this item, Mayor.
We have it. Item is approved. Thank you very much. And the presentation is the same one, Mitch, for this, and so, we'll read it into the record, and we'll vote again.
Mayor and council, item 19, approve ZN 13, 2021, and pass and adopt ordinance number 3084, an ordinance related to zoning, amending a portion of ordinance number 1226, an existing PUD planned unit development... in existing PUD planning unit development district, ZN 132021 mixed-use development at northwest corner of Craig and Bruce to allow commercial and light industrial uses on approximately 20.5 acres for property located at the northwest corner of Craig Road and Bruce Street and providing for other matters property related there, too.
Thank you. We'll open up the public hearing. As you're going to like to discuss this item with the council, now would be the time to come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And Councilwoman, Councilwoman Goines-Brown, one more time?
Just motion to approve, item 19.
We have a motion. Might be close.
I snuck in my blue card, Mayor.
Items approved. Mr. Developer Extraordinaire, thank you so much for making us happy.
Thank you all so much. And Mayor, I just want to say, I'm not sure if I'll get a chance to appear before you leave office, but I just want to publicly commend and thank you for your stewardship of bringing the city back from the abyss, from the Great Recession, and really steering not only just growth, but smart growth for this community. And I hope that your constituents appreciate that.
Well, I'll take that pat on the back, but we have good people that I run with.
I know.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, we didn't get a chance to record Councilman Churchill's vote.
Oh, good question. Richard, did you want to vote on this?
Yes, Mayor, very happy, very happy to approve this item as well. Thank you.
All right. Richard, you have to be a little faster on the draw there. You got you.
Item 20, approved ZN 142021 and pass and adopt ordinance number 3085, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately 17.93 plus minus acres from an OL open land district to an M2 general industrial district, ZN 142021, Tropical Speedway Commerce Center Phase 3, TSCC 3, for property located at the northeast corner of El Campo Grande, Mallard Hood Street, and providing for other matters property related there, too.
Thank you. Are you here to give a presentation?
No, I'm just here to answer any questions, if there was any.
All right, great. Then I'll open up the public comment. Seeing none, we'll see if we have any questions right now. Public hearing is closed. Counselor, any comments or questions on this? I think we have a Mr. Mathias?
Mateus.
Mateus here to answer any of your questions?
No, Mayor, no particular questions. Obviously, for me, this, we are opening up an opportunity, going from open land to actually some industrial land. We've been doing very well, I think, in the area in generating, as you say, real estate. I don't have any general questions, other than I hope you get us a good project. And with that.
It'll be similar to everything else out there that we're doing, so.
Fantastic. And with that, Mayor, that would be my motion to approve.
Thank you. No other comments? Do they have a motion? Please cast your vote.
May I approach him? Aye.
Aye. Items approved. Thank you, Tom.
Item 21, approved VAC 072021 Rosetta Way for applicant ASS3 LLC, Tom Wheeler, to vacate Rosetta Way between North Fifth Street and Eagle Way.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Welcome to the meeting this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Stephanie Allen, 1980, Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. First, I'd just like to thank staff very much for their favorable recommendation. This property, as you can see on the overhead, is located to the south of Washburn, between North Fifth and Eagle Way. There's an approved mini-storage project on the northern portion of the site, and the applicant has since picked up two and a half acres along the south. And so this proposal is to vacate the Rosetta alignment that would go through the center of the site and allow this overall site to be developed as one. So again, we very much appreciate staff's recommendation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is anybody in the public that'd like to discuss this item with the council? Nope, and we will close the public hearing. It doesn't give me an idea on my paperwork whose district this is in. Do you guys have an idea? I just want to bring that council person to the conversation. Do you? Is it you? Richard? Oh, it's yours, Richard. Are you, Richard, are you okay with this?
Yes. I'm fine with that, Mayor, so I'll go ahead and make the motion, if that's okay. Item 21, VAC-07-2021.
Thank you. We have a motion. Council, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephanie. Moving on to business.
Item number 22, presentation by Assistant City Manager Dellen Goldberg regarding this City of North Las Vegas Learn NLV Initiative to provide high-quality equitable education to every child in North Las Vegas.
Welcome, Ms. Goldberg.
Hi, Mayor and council. Thank you. So I think you're getting used to seeing me up here to talk about what I think is our very exciting educational initiative. So I have a quick SNUMA update, and then I'm going to introduce the newest spoke in our Wheel of Learn NLV. So the quick SNUMA update, as Councilwoman Goines-Brown mentioned, we are super excited that we have added kindergarten to our lineup of SNUMA. Last year was 1 through 8, and this year is going to be K through 8. And part of the reason for that is we know that early childhood education sets up that path for success. And so the earlier we can get them in, get them learning and engaged, get the families learning and engaged, the better outcomes there are. So we are getting a tremendous amount of interest, and I am thrilled, I think, to announce, as of today, we are on a waitlist for SNUMA. We are at capacity, which is super, super exciting. Only downside is more people are interested. So I'll need some guidance there from you all. But it's a super-popular program. We're really excited that people are understanding that there's options and there's different fits for your child and your family. And we want to provide a diversity of options. Which leads me to my next spoke in Learn NLV. So I am pleased to announce what we are calling our School Community Compacts. And this is essentially a data-driven partnership that we hope will help ensure on a community level our goal and our shared goal with other leaders in the community of creating high, achieving seats for our North Las Vegas students. And so what these are, it's essentially a grant partnership. And so we would propose to provide funding and resources to the schools to really target the problems that they have identified for that specific campus. So over the past year, we've been engaging with a huge number of education stakeholders, teachers, principals, families, students, researchers. And what we found is a school could be a block away from each other, but the needs on this campus are extremely different from the needs on that campus. And who better to know what those needs are than the school leaders that see it and deal with it every day? And so we kept hearing, well, my school needs this, and my school needs that, very specific campus needs. And so we said, well, we can help address those needs potentially. And so that's where this School Community Compact idea came up. The principals approached us with what they think, the one thing they think would move the dial over the next year in their classrooms and on their campuses. And if we're able to make that happen, we're going to track that data and then apply those lessons. If we see the family engagement is a problem at one school, and by creating a family engagement center, we can move the dial on that, well, now we have a working model that we can replicate in other places where family engagement is a problem. But if, you know, perhaps mental health is an issue in a different campus, they don't need family engagement, they need psychologists, we would help address that issue. And so we are in the process. This is for public schools, charter schools. We want to work with our partners and raise up, just like we are raising up kids through SNUMA. We want to raise up kids through all the different educational outlets. And so the School Community Compacts, we hope will do this. Again, this is a pilot project. We want to see if this works. So we're going to start with a small number of schools, two to three schools, for a pilot for the next year, pending your approval, of course. And we'll see how it goes. In exchange for providing the resources, the schools will have very specific, trackable goals that they will be monitoring and reporting on throughout the year, so we can really see the impact these resources and efforts are having. And then we'll reassess the next year to see if it's worth expanding or taking a different approach to. And so in the next couple of months, we are working with them specifically. I would like to, with your permission, invite our partner School Compact leaders to a future council meeting to explain what they hope to do with those resources, should they be approved.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, but I'll reserve myself. Ms. Goines-Brown?
Thank you, Dellen. And just one question. With the public schools, as far as the resources or agencies or what have you, do we have to go through the chain of command through them? Or do schools have the autonomy to be able to just select and do that?
Yeah, so that's a great question. We really want to empower strong leaders. And so, you know, the principals know their structure and what they have to go to. But they've been empowered as leaders within the organization that they work in to address the issues on their campus, and they are super-engaged. I mean, I know you know this, but we are extremely proud of our North Las Vegas principals here, elementary, middle and high school. They want to do the best they can for these kids. Let's do all the teachers and the district and everybody else. And so sometimes they just need that extra boost. You know, as we know with the city, when you're leading an organization with myriad needs, you sometimes have to look at the big picture and give what you think everybody can benefit from, knowing that that school might not be getting exactly what that school needs. But you're helping everybody as best you can. This tries to get around that problem. We understand that, you know, the organization of education in Nevada and Southern Nevada is a huge network. You can't possibly address each specific need. And so this is really empowering those leaders that know what is needed. They just need help making that happen. So that's where we hope to get in. And so, yes, we've been working with all the partners and stakeholders, and we hope that the principals get the support they need to be able to participate and work with us.
And I know we, just three that I know of, Quantum McCall, Hayden and Legacy all have new administrators there. And I know two of them are minority administrators, so might be two good people just to tap in, just to see what ideas they can further bring to the table, just for those underserved populations.
That's phenomenal, Councilwoman. I love this. And I, you know, this is, I will get my direction from you guys, but certainly if we see that this is working, this is scalable, this is something that if it's not working, we can pull back on, you know, after the first year. If it's something that in three months, we see this is having huge impacts, there's nothing to say, in October, we can't create more compacts, and in February, we can't do more. So that'll be, I'll take direction from you guys.
Okay, thanks.
So my question, as you mentioned, Quantum McCall, I was lucky enough to be there the first year it opened. It was a beautiful school. But now I recognize that there's a lot of young Hispanic families that live in that area, and they send their children to school, and the children come home and they say, how's school going? Oh, I'm doing great, good grades, you know? But they're having events, parent-teacher conferences, stuff like that, and the children are not bringing that information home. But their mothers walk their children to school, and they need an electronic sign that says, "Parent-teacher conference is this," so the parents can look up there in both languages and know something's going on. I didn't get the little handout. Is this the stuff you're talking about? Is it, when you talk about helping the school, is this it, or what else could it be?
Yes, that's a great question, Mayor. Thank you. So that's exactly right. It could be maybe Quantum McCall. They need a sign, a bilingual digital sign, that they can say, hey, just a reminder, school starts at 8:15, and parent-teacher conferences are starting on Tuesday. To your point, maybe another school, some of the schools we've heard of, some of the ideas is a family engagement center. So they're seeing chronic absenteeism. They're seeing people not register for school until well into the school year, you know, August, September, beyond, which hurts the education because they can't plan the classrooms, they have to move teachers. So their idea is if we get an employee to create this family engagement center, so they're going to help with the communication to parents. They're going to help with wraparound services, transportation, employment, just the logistics for, say, a single parent with multiple kids. Just getting the kid from home to school can be a barrier to success or even showing up at school. So maybe for that school, we hire a staff member to address that. Maybe another school, it's a reading interventionist. They're having trouble getting read by three. But if they had that one person who could pull out little Timmy or, you know, and work with them one-on-one, that kid will now read by three, things like that. And that's the difference. It's, there's no one-size-fits-all, which is why these are so, they're almost micrograms. They're targeted because it really is a specific approach. And the goal is, you know, one staff member, one program, isn't going to change education overnight. But the idea is if we start to find the data, and again, this is data-driven, there's measurables and tracking that's happening all the time. So if we can start to figure out the secret sauce that, oh, this moves the dial, if we move the dial slightly enough times, you then become, you go from a one-star school to a four-star school or a five-star school.
So I know the school district is responsible for teaching students. And their idea would be, stay out of the teaching business. City of North Las Vegas, you're not teachers. But then again, now we start doing this kind of stuff, and then they start saying, well, we don't have to give any money to that school because North Las Vegas is paying for it. So they want both ends of the stick here. I'm a little concerned that our teachers are wanting to teach, and the school district isn't really wanting to consider teaching the most important thing that goes on in the school anymore. And if we start putting our resources in all these schools, they're going to start budgeting around our money. Is this a one-shot deal? Is it, I mean, how long does this go for?
Yeah, no, that's a really good point. That's up to you, and it's up to the results. So we are not throwing resources at a program that doesn't show that it moves the dial significantly. And we're not talking, you know, one kid did slightly better than he did last year. I mean, the agreements, which I will present to you once, you know, we have them, they're asking for specific metrics. So an example, for instance, would be tracking student attendance rate, tracking chronic absenteeism, tracking proficiency rates and scores that are tied specifically to that behavior. So with your example of the sign, maybe one of the data points would be 25% of families showed up at the beginning of the year for parent-teacher conferences. After they created, you know, they posted the sign, at the end of the year, for the end of the year, parent-teacher conferences, 50% of parents showed up. And then that translated to a 2% boost in reading scores because parents knew that Timmy was failing reading, that sort of thing. You know, at the end of the day, we're talking small numbers, small amounts. I mean, a sign, what is that, $30,000, $40,000? That is not going to educate a kid. This is considered to be supplemental. So, you know, we want to support CCSD. We want to support our charter partners. We want to support our private schools in our community. We want to support our parochial schools. I mean, we are completely agnostic that we just want high-quality seats for our kids. Whoever is going to provide them, however they're going to do it, we just want those kids to have equal opportunities. And so I think this is meant and intended, and certainly I would hope everybody would take it in this way to supplement. We want to do our part to raise up everyone. This is not meant to replace or replicate. But the amounts we're talking are so small that one teacher could make a difference to a kid who can't read, but one teacher, you know, the amounts we're talking isn't, is not a drop in the bucket in the overall picture of CCSD. Does that answer your question, Mayor?
In a sense, I'd like to see the results, like what you're talking about. But I do believe that a city, and I think our city manager agrees with this, if something is going wrong in the corporate boundaries of our city, the staff and the council want to step up and make sure we can try to help an organization. But eventually, they need to start running their own business, you know?
Exactly, Mayor. And if I can add, the way this came about was organic. We didn't start out saying, we're going to go out and find principals and ask them what we need and, you know, create this program. It was in trying to figure out solutions to the barriers we saw during the pandemic and just the lack of education our kids in North Las Vegas were receiving. The principals were engaged. They shared our concerns. Our babies need to be in school, and I can't find them or I can't reach them. And so out of those conversations with the stakeholders is where we heard, you know, half my kids don't even register for school till September. That's a huge problem. That creates A, B, C, D, E, F, you know, outfall. And we thought, well, man, that's an easy problem. Like, how can we address that problem? And so that's kind of how this program came about is because each school, we heard small problems that seemed easily fixable with a small injection of resources or some attention, but could have big impacts on the other side. And so that's really what we want to try is low-hanging fruit, if you will. This isn't going to revolutionize education on the global big E, but for that school, it can revolutionize education, if that makes sense.
Mr. City Manager, do you want to add anything to this presentation? I know that you worked on this. I just want to hear what your thoughts were, too.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I understand exactly what you're saying. And I think the thought behind it is, it is, you know, it's innovative. It's a different way of looking at these traditional problems. But we've seen a lot of success in our Community Development Block grant funding, where we, you know, provide resources to help nonprofits or other groups provide services to our residents. And education's no different, and it being a nonprofit provides an important resource to the residents. But this is just an innovative way, a different way to look at how we can identify specific, almost if you think about it, CIP-type projects. We're not talking. um, specific, almost if you think about it, CIP-type projects. We're not talking um, things that need reoccurring dollars, but we're talking, we're, we're excited really to see the different opportunities that the schools provide. And what this does is it does something that um, often in the education space, there's all kinds of testing, there's all kinds of metrics to try and gauge success. Um, this makes it really pretty simple, actually, because dollars go specifically to one thing. They don't go to a whole bunch of different buckets and things. And then you can, eh, part of the process of identifying the, the project to fund is identifying uh, very good metrics to measure success, because that's what we're interested in doing. And you're right, that you have to always be concerned whenever you um, put dollars into a budget, that then those become not only dependent, but then they start uh, taking other dollars away because they're reliant on that. Um, and that's something that we've seen a lot in the education space. We're hoping that this uh, innovative program will be able to bring some good projects, that we can see some immediate measurable results from. And we'll see how it goes. That's the great thing about this. I very much think it's what we talk about a lot with staff as, as far as being a laboratory. And we're going to test. We're going to have some dependent variables. We're going to have some independent variables. We're going to see how they interact with each other and we're going to see if we're able to move that dial um, of education for our, our kiddos in North Las Vegas. And if we are, then staff's going to come back and ask for uh, for further support on this. But we're not just going to lob off marijuana dollars and just throw them at schools. Um, we're going to have very targeted funds with the expectation of targeted results. It's a voluntary thing. Um, and we hope that we'll see good results from it.
I want to just throw some odd out to you. I, I have a curiosity about making businesses and governments work better. You know, I just, I just love that. So, and I know that people who live in a community sometimes love their community, but you can break a community down into school district areas too, you know. And I've often thought, our police officers are so busy doing things that maybe juveniles are doing things, spray painting and you know, all that kind of stuff, that if there was a way that you could say, don't, um, if crime goes down in your school district area and everybody, the, the mothers and the fathers say, you listen, you don't do anything stupid, the police have to come here and the city will send whatever money they might have spent to crime, they might have sent to the school to help build our neighborhoods a little bit. And I often wondered if there would be a community sense of, let's help these young kids out. Maybe we're seventeen years old and we're kind of maybe a little tougher and rougher, you know what I mean? But then my little brothers and sisters go to that school. So let's don't do crime over here, you know, in our area. So I, I just often wonder, how can we get the community more involved with making the schools the center of the community, that little, that area community? So I'm just throwing that out. Uh, I don't want to reward the rich side of towns who have no crime and they get everything and, well, you had crime in your area, so you don't get anything. I just, I'm just wondering if there's a way that we could look at the police statistics in an area and say, guys, let's, let's build a community around this school. Let's all work for our children in this area, you know? So anyway, that's just a thought that I have, is I consider how to make North Las Vegas a stronger community also. So I'm-
Mayor, whenever you're done.
Oh, Richard, you, I'm Ben.
Uh, you, you know, um, uh, Dylan and I have had this conversation before. And uh, you know, I agree with both of yourselves uh, and um, with uh, Ryan on, on this issue. You know, um, North Las Vegas uh, has taken the point in doing things that no other municipality here in the valley has done. So for me, it's a, it's a matter of pride and privilege to be part of doing exactly what, what's being discussed over here in this presentation. Uh, but I, you know, I, I, I always have this uh, concern in the back of my mind, dealing somewhat with the school district, and we're still dealing with the school district uh, in my ward, you know, particularly with uh, Ruby Duncan, uh, where it's taken over a, a year and a half to get, you know, fourteen lampposts fixed. Uh, there's, there's definitely, at least from my perspective, a lack of communication. So when we're investing money for very, very good things like this, uh, and again, I use that word concern and that's probably not the correct word. Uh, maybe I'm a little apprehensive uh, about uh, not the, not the principals and not the teachers because they're amazing people. You know, they're, they're the boots on the, uh, on the ground. But it's the administrative people who may somewhere along the line feel that the burden is being uh, taken off of their shoulders a little bit, uh, and they'll be less engaged because we're kind of taking the, uh, the lead a little bit. Uh, so that, that's one consideration that uh, you know, that, that concerns me. The other thing is uh, you know, in Dylan's presentation, I know we had a gentleman come in from uh, from California, uh, and uh, we spoke about uh, vocational training and some of the charter schools over here. Um, I, I would like to know, and, and not tonight, I, I don't want to lengthen the uh, presentation or lengthen the meeting at this point, but you know, somewhere in the conversation, uh, I would like to know uh, how we could uh, engage some of these children in, in areas that are more vocational, uh, as something that would uh, uh, appeal to them, to get them more involved and, and, and give them a future that, that they're happy to be in.
Well, well-
I'm done, Mayor.
No, that's fine. Dylan's shaking her head.
Thank you, Councilman. Point well taken.
Um, I, Councilman Brown?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, to the City Manager's uh, point regarding uh, schools in the same neighborhood with different needs, um, of course, I'm, I'm very aware of, of the schools here in North, in, in Ward One. Um, Quantum, you know, Marion Kalin is literally, uh, it's about five hundred yards away from Quantum McCall. Uh, Marion Kalin, it was a four-star school with the principal of the year for the district, you know, uh, and then Quantum McCall, well, I'm not going to beat up on them, but they were not. They were, they were lacking. And they have new leadership. Uh, same, Fay, Fay Heron, um, four-star school, Marion Kalin, which is a, a less than a mile away, well, they're struggling. Uh, uh, and not to beat up on them. Um, Mayor, to, to your point, um, I, I, I think that, uh, we, we taught, uh, what this is, uh, eh, what this is about is I think it's a, it's a amount of leadership. Um, all, all, all the schools, they have a, a certain funding formula that, you know, provides them, you know, of course, money based upon their enrollment. The big difference is with our schools on our side of town, we, we, because of the population that we work with, they, they have higher needs. Uh, we, we will have on average, a slightly higher uh, amount of transient, uh, uh, children who are transient to the area, um, as, as other parts of, of the valley. The, these are our children who need, have, they have higher needs. Um, we will have a slightly higher uh, amount of children who are ELL and uh, these English and language learners, they have a certain amount of needs. You won't find that in other parts of, of, of the valley where the children have more homogeneous uh, population. Uh, same thing with IEP students. Uh, the uh, our, our distinguished colleague here, uh, I know that she was probably um, in charge of her budget at, when, when she was at her school before. And she knows what exactly it means if you have four, uh, no, a, a, a couple dozen of IEP students and you have to actually hire specialists to address that. And you don't get very much, eh, in a way, of special consideration from the schools or district. That's just the way it is. Um, the big difference between us here and other parts of the valley, I actually attended a, a fundraiser for a school, I forget the name of it, but they're literally almost at the base of, uh, you can see Red Rock uh, in the background from their school. And um, there, they have, their, their parents, they, they understand that sometimes their kids have needs. When they throw a fundraiser there, they bring in thirty-five, forty thousand dollars on their fundraisers. Because those parents, you know, they, they, uh, uh, there's, they, they are um, uh, uh, um, public school uh, parents, right? But they are different. They have more means. Uh, when they have a fundraiser, they, you know, uh, uh, their kid goes out and, 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 and has a little sheet with everything. The kids come back with, you know, with everything that's filled on it. When our kids go and have a fundraiser for their, for their schools, it's, it's a little bit more trying for them. Um, this, I think, uh, shows a, a bit of leadership. Um, I, I think from the city of North Las Vegas, that, like you said, we're, we're not taking over the functions of, of, of the school district. Um, this is, you know, again, uh, we believe that whenever you have uh, professionals who, uh, they know exactly what they're doing at their schools. Um, uh, uh, again, I'm sure the, uh, the, the Councilwoman, had she, had her school had a, a chance to have a, a little bit of, uh, some, some funds for a special program that they want to do. Again, as you pointed out, a reading program, um, an ELL program, something, you know, where you just need just a little bit more help, they would have jumped on that. I, I, I'm sure, you, you see that as a need. And although it's not going to be a huge thing, it's going to be uh, important, I think, to a, a, a very small uh, group of people. And to the City Manager's point, you know, our, our sister city over here at Henderson, they have committed, you know, so, uh, their, their marijuana funds to the schools. And I commend them for a bit, for, for having the ability to do that. Uh, I, I just think, you know, um, uh, uh, staff is, uh, staff, um, the conversation, I think, here in North Las Vegas is, what can we do to seed our future? And that's what we're doing. We, we're planting seeds in North Las Vegas for our kids, for, you know, and, instead of us always saying, well, why can't we have that? Well, we can if we begin to strategically uh, uh, apply just a, a little bit here and there. And of course, if we had way more money, I'm sure that we, we wouldn't think twice about spending it on, on, on our city's children. And um, uh, just, at, at Rancho High School, just for you to know, um, our, our principal, um, who, uh, of course, he ascended to uh, another uh, uh, position with the school district, he actually had some discretionary funds and he actually hired his, he actually was able to uh, get the services of, of a truancy officer and a car to literally go visit the homes of kids who were not showing up school. And kids show up for a myriad of reasons. Not just because they're, they're at home, you know, eating Funyuns and, and playing video games. Sometimes, you know, they're working to, to help out the family. Sometimes there's an illness that goes unreported. Um, I, I, I had, I, I had one of my students who uh, died in a car accident, uh, unfortunately, last year. No one knew about it because no one in the family got the call at school. It wasn't until our, our, our truancy officer went and found out, then of course, then we put a, a, a plant to action for the kid. But you know, uh, again, that's just one example of some money that was used by my prior principal to address a specific uh, 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 need. And although, again, it's not a huge amount of money, it, it is a, a, a small part of money that just makes life a little bit easier, I, I think, for, for our, uh, for, for our kids. And um, I, 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 I think this is, you know, uh, well thought out. And like you said, Mayor, this is not, we're not just splashing money. We're just, we're not doing, we're not making it rain here, right? We're, it's, it's targeted money uh, to, uh, to our school, making available to building administrators. They know what they, what they need for their students, right? And this is just that little extra help that we can give them. And uh, I, I don't think anybody in our city is going to fault us for, for, uh, for, for this, uh, the, the, for this um, initiative that, 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 that we have embarked on. And um, if, if we need a, if, uh, I, I don't think we need a, um, uh, we, we don't need a, a motion for this, right?
No.
Well, if we needed one, I know, I would definitely, I would hit that thing ten times.
Yeah. Thank you very much. I don't see anybody else that wants to, oh, Ms. Goldberg Brown?
Um, just one more thing real quick. And I think, just to your point, Mayor, I think the school district, it'll just kind of be the opposite as far as, because I'm looking at, at another set of lenses, because with the principals that we have talked with and identified with, there are very specific needs that are very, very attainable. And it doesn't take a huge dollar amount to attain, you know, just to reach the goals that they have identified. So we'll be able to do it. And I think of otherwise, it'll open more eyes to say, wow, we really need to step up our game, so to speak.
Well, it sounds to me like Ms. Goldberg's on the right track and City Manager's advising her well. So I appreciate you. Um, I hear, I see no other, but any council wants to speak. So thank you for this presentation. Ms. Goldberg, you're doing a fantastic job. You're a, you're a leader in education in this community. I'm just letting you know that, okay?
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
No motion is required. Moving on.
Item number twenty-three, pass and adopt resolution number two six six nine, declaring the city's intent to enter into a ground lease agreement with Clark County School District related to Harkey Park and J.D. Smith's Middle School, generally located on East Tropicana Avenue between North Brew Street and North-
Tonopah?
-McDaniel Street in North Las Vegas.
You said, Tr- Tonopah.
Oh, Tonopah.
That's mine, yeah.
Yeah. I need to go to Snuma.
Yeah.
Or, or hooked on phonics or something, but yeah, my bad.
That's good. Very, very good. Way for the record, you know. Um, Mr. Dale Daphram?
Yep, no problem, Mayor. I just wanted to let you know that, uh, if you guys recall, back in twenty eighteen, um, we entered into agreement with the school district to allow them to demolish, you know, the existing Harkey Park, which was located on McDaniel and Tonopah, and build the new J.D. Smith School while they kept the existing J.D. Smith School in operation. And um, in exchange for that, we received like roughly point four acres of property plus uh, their commitment to build us a new park area at the old J.D. Smith uh, location once they demolished it. Uh, we have one hiccup with that process is that we received um, land and water conservation funds from the National Park Service when we originally constructed the Harkey Park area. And um, we have to get that signed off at a national level before we can actually complete the agreement with the school district and exchange deeds for the, basically the property swap. So uh, with that said, the resolution that you have in front of you today is really um, a declaration that we're going to end, enter into a, a land or a ground use agreement, lease agreement with the school district, where they lease their property to us and we lease our property to them for no exchange of money. And we're just going to do that um, until we actually receive the National Park sign-off. And I, I think, as you, Councilman Brown mentioned, the park's finished and open. It's just a, a soft opening right now in the school district and the actual J.D. Smith is ready for use. So um, therefore, we recommend that you approve the item today so we can declare that we're going to enter into a land use-
Thank you. Good presentation on your part too. Interesting test. So if there's no other comment on this, um, the chair will take a motion to pass and adopt this resolution.
Mayor, um, I think we should take a, a, a tour of the new J.D. Smith to see what the amenity, the incredible amenities that the children in the area. Uh, you know the condition of the school before it got demolished, night and day. The, the children are going to be, are, are going to be greeted to an incredible uh, new facility. Our new park is a, is a step up. And um, if there's nothing else, I, I'll, I'll, I'll make a, a motion uh, to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Councilman Churchill?
Mayor pro temp, vote aye.
Items approved. Moving on to appointments.
Item number twenty-four, appointment of an at-large member to the Parks, Arts, Recreation and Culture Advisory Board to fill an non-expire term ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. This was continued from the June second meeting.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, Director Palmer has interviewed some people and the chosen Shannon Hiller to join his board. He thinks she would be a great asset to that board. So based upon his recommendation, I'll make a motion to appoint Shannon Hiller to the Parks, Arts, Recreation and Culture Board, Advisory Board. That'll be my motion.
Aye, for Mayor pro temp, Churchill.
Items approved.
Item number twenty-five, appoint city council member to the Clark County Regional Flood Control District and Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada for a two-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Councilman Brown's been a very active member on that board and has asked Council that we reappoint him once again to the Regional Flood Control District. Is there any questions on that? Anybody? So Councilman, you're getting um, a recommendation and your seniority is growing on that committee, I believe. So we'd like to approve Councilman Brown to be in the Regional Flood Control District and Regional Transportation Commission. That'll be the motion.
Aye, from Mayor pro temp, Churchill.
Items approved.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll work hard for the city on both of-
Yeah.
Item number twenty-six, appoint city council members to the Clark County School District Local Oversight Panel for school facilities for a two-year term ending July thirtieth, thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. And once again, we'd like to express thanks for Councilman Goldens Brown for being on this board. She has expressed an interest to continue on with the Clark County School District Local Oversight Panel for school facilities. And once again, she's getting seniority on that board. I think it's good for our community and you're-
Aye, accept.
She's accept. So that'll be the chair's motion. Please cast your vote.
Aye, from Mayor pro temp, Churchill.
Items approved. Moving on to City Manager's report.
Mayor and Council, just one item, just to, to put on the record. In regards to um, item twenty-five and twenty-six, one of the things that uh, the, the, the terms for the regional boards have traditionally been um, aligned with uh, your all's-
Elections.
Yeah, elections and term on the, on the board. So we're going to have to relook at this because of the fact that now elections have changed.
at this because of the fact that now elections have changed, um, to even number years, and so we want to, we might be bringing some of these items back, just because we need to have a, it needs to be cotermerous with your term, um, and the, the terms are different now, so we just, we're, we're going to look, look at that because, uh, and make sure in out years that it is cotermerous with your terms.
So in the meantime, they're still active and moving forward on their-
But yeah, these are fine, these have been passed.
Could I ask you to add one other thing? Um, I know that you've been on, uh, hundreds of phone calls concerning what's going on with public health in this valley, especially concerning COVID, and I know that, could you give us a recap on what you're going to do here at the city of North Las Vegas? And I, I think I talked to the, are you the chairman of the Health Board? And, and he's, the Health Board, from what I understand, and Scott, would you jump in on this with, uh, the, how was this, are we listening to the county, or is the Health Department making the issue? And then how were you handling it at the city? That, that'd be my, my question, or for our residents and everything.
Thank you, Mayor Lee, so the Health District is, uh, the Southern Nevada Region's public health entity, which comprises of, uh, public health experts that advise communities, community leaders and community members on all, all things pertaining to public health relative to COVID and the continual response to the pandemic. The Health District would be the regional body that would formulate recommendations, uh, that local jurisdictions would be, um, expected to adhere to and incorporate. That would be, um, both business, um, public, as well as, uh, recommendations for the general public to maintain the highest level of, of health and safety in terms of the spread of the pandemic. So the Health District is the advisory, um, and, and as things, this is a very fluid process, we all know, we do this, then we do this, we change, we do so because this is a, a very fluid situation, and really, um, honing in on the expertise of the public health professionals is, is, I think, the, the most prudent thing that we can do as a, as a municipality.
Mayor, I concur with that, so what's going to, what is happening, that's the only item that I really had for the report tonight, is at midnight, starting at midnight tonight, um, uh, employees will begin wearing masks when indoors, and so that mail has gone out during this meeting, it went out to, um, employees to, to just let them know of that in case they didn't know. The, uh, commission will have, uh, I think, August seventeenth, they're going to revisit it to make, to, to, to see where we're at. Um, and having been involved in this regionally, uh, for, well, since the pandemic hit, for a year and a half now almost, and having, you know, just like this week, just, you know, lots of calls throughout the week, throughout the weekend, um, I think that the process, uh, yesterday, um, is, is, was a good process. Um, it, it was a culmination of a few, uh, se- several, I think, three regional policy, uh, group meetings on this, where we talked, um, with gaming, where we talked with, uh, the business community, where we talked with, there's over eighty, um, different, uh, organizations and, and institutions that are represented in the policy, uh, the regional policy, uh, group. And to have that kind of conversation prior to a mandate, uh, being discussed, and then when the mandate was discussed, it was discussed in a public meeting, um, where there was public comment, and it's not an easy thing to do. Um, if anybody saw any of the activity yesterday or was there and, and witnessed some of it, um, it was, it was not a, an easy thing, but it was the right thing to do, I think it was the hallmark of representative government, to have that conversation, which is something different than what we've had in the past, um, which is why in the, in the past, when we had lots of mandates that came down, that they were surprises to us, sometimes we had minutes' notice, um, that's the reason why they were constantly being changed within two days, usually one day or, or two days later, uh, usually it just took a long enough time for city attorneys and county attorneys and others to be like, wait, how are you going to actually operationalize this? And then there had to be revisions, and that led to a ton of confusion in the community with con- constant changes. So while I'm not, uh, I think it was a very sound move, uh, for the governor to, to give the authority to, uh, to local governments that are closest to the ground, um, and I applaud the County Commission, um, whether you like the decision or not, I applaud them for the process of involving stakeholders, having a conversation open in the public about it, um, hearing, uh, the things, the, the, the passion, the business owners that were there, and ultimately, you're going to always get a better outcome when policy is, in a representative government, is made in a representative way. So that's, that's where we're at now, um, this, you know, today, we had the highest increase that we've had in COVID since, uh, February, I think, so we're still seeing numbers go up, there's a lot of concern for all the different events that we've, that we've had over the last couple of weeks, and those events were not the, the real traditional Las Vegas events as far as a lot of people coming in, those were a lot of locals. Um, and so there's been some criticism out there about, well, why do you have, and, why is it just employees and not, you know, everybody wearing masks? Well, the reality is, is we have a couple hundred thousand people that come to and visit us, and we're protecting our residents, we're protecting our constituents and our friends and our neighbors and our family members, um, that are working in positions and places where they're not really working with a lot of people from Nevada, they might be working with tourists and other people that are coming in. So it is a mitigation effort that would be different in a, in a community like ours that has such a high influx of people coming in than it would be if you were in, like, Fargo, and you put in a policy where only the employees, but no one else in the community is wearing a mask. At the same time, what's really important is, uh, coinciding with this was the Health District's concern with making sure vaccination rates continue to increase, so that this hopefully buys us a little time, but we're still, uh, very concerned, and they're still watching the numbers of what impact a lot of these large events, like the Garth Brooks concert, which had a, a far higher, higher percentage of, um, Southern Nevadans in attendance than what normally would be in an event where it'd have a small number and a lot of people coming from outside.
So do you think, let's say, the decision is now made here, you're not waiting for the governor of California, you're not waiting, you're, you're taking information, but you're looking at our community's issues, you're, the transparency is there, but are you guys now wanting the cities to go out and enforce this, or the business owners now in this community, are they kind of joining with you? So do we have people going out there knocking on doors and threatening people like we did before, or are we hoping that all the businesses get on board with City of North Las Vegas and try to slow this down?
Um, it is a mandate, um, we are hoping, we, we've had a lot of cooperation, I think that if the choice was a closure or, uh, reduction in capacity, that masks for employees was a much better alternative to see, uh, what could happen. In, in reality, masks in and of themselves, um, their ability to, to, to impact the spread is also just in the consciousness of the person wearing the mask. I think those that, like myself, who've put a mask back on and we haven't done it in a while, I, I've used this stuff, the, the hand sanitizer like four, five times today. I haven't used it in weeks, um, just because the mask does that, it changes your mentality, it makes you remember you're in the middle of a pandemic, it, it makes you more conscious of things that are going on. We are not going to be, um, bringing on outside staff like we did before in order to go and do the kind of robust enforcement that we did in the past. Part of the reason with that is because we saw such a high level of compliance, uh, we will be, uh, monitoring, making sure that there is compliance with this, but our businesses have been good partners in trying to get through this, and they are in a position, um, they'll, they'll tell you when you talk with them, they want to stay in business.
Yeah, that's what I'm figuring, too. Councilman?
So I, I think Ryan explained the rationale behind the mandate from the county relative to the employee, employer, public space usage of the mask, that's a very sound explanation. But if you look beyond that, the Health District as an advisory and a guidance organization based on public health expertise and science, they're advocating for something higher than or expanded from, and it's a recommendation, it's not a requirement, it's not a mandate, it's a suggestion, a strong suggestion, recommendation, whether you've been vaccinated or not, and I know I've heard some folks say, we were told if we get the vaccine, we'd never have to wear a mask again, and you know what, this is a very fluid thing, and I think it's important to note that the Health District is following the latest trends, specific, as the mayor said, to our region, to our community, and the, the unique thing that I would like to point out is there have been breakthrough transmissions, meaning someone who's been vaccinated and, and contracts COVID, but those people aren't getting sick and going to the hospital and dying by and large, but what is occurring is the folks that are at UMC today in the COVID area, ninety-six percent of those people have not been vaccinated, so they're, they're just, that's a very telling statistic to me. I think, uh, err on the side of caution, be safe, protect yourself, wear a mask in public spaces, whether you've been vaccinated or not, it's your choice because it's a recommendation, the government's not telling you to do that, but I just think use wisdom and prudence, and, um, hopefully, if folks, uh, get the vaccine, well, it's a timing thing, it's a race, um, relative to variants and mutations, uh, you can't mutate something that doesn't exist, and we're just kind of hoping that we get to that threshold where it will fade out, so.
Yeah, and I think it's really important, too, is what Councilman said as far as science, science is an evolving thing, it, that's the nature of science, is it, it tests, it tries, it, it learns, it informs itself, it, it might scrap certain things and take up certain things, and there's a lot of conversation about masks, there's a lot of conversation about, you know, this, uh, about COVID, about the vaccine, vaccine, and what I just kind of remind people when they have their theories, usually adopted from a Google search, that there is, we're talking about a CDC that has six point four billion dollars a year in funding that goes specifically towards, um, infectious diseases. So that's a pretty large budget to argue with, and while you might be a whiz on, on Google, and you might be very proficient at surfing the internet, unless you have a six point four billion dollar budget dedicated to infectious diseases, I don't really care about your advice. And so we've been following, um, we have, we're fortunate in Southern Nevada to have a Health District that represents our needs, that also has a, um, a medical doctor that we've relied on and, and worked throughout this process.
For the record, uh, the mayor has stepped away from the dais, um, since the Mayor Pro Tem is, uh, online, I'll, I'll just take over just for the last item here.
Well, that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Uh, let's go ahead and move on to the, uh, second, I'm sorry, did, did one of my colleagues have a, a comment on the report? Uh, Councilman, I think you said it all, thank you so much, and if there's nothing else, let's go on to the second public forum. Uh, now is the time for the public to speak on issues that are not on the agenda, speakers are limited to, to three minutes, our member of council may hear these items, but may not take action time upon any item raised during public forum. Uh, Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards, written comments, or callers on the line?
No, Councilman, we don't.
Okay, well, uh, in that case, if there's, uh, no one who wants to speak, I will close the public forum, and I'm sure the mayor will not mind if I adjourn this public meeting.